Okay, Waitley Elementary School Committee meeting beginning at eight oh three. First thing is to approve the minutes of our November sixteenth meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Yes, okay. We're on to the financial statement and warrants. So you nailed out the financial reports. I don't have formal report. There's nothing new to report on as concerns or changes. But for the record, there were thirteen warrants signed electronically since last meeting. That total was seventy-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents. If you have questions, I'm happy to take them. That's specific one items. I didn't have any questions. Is anyone else? Okay. And now we're on to the principals' report.
Morning and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Last time I told you we were planning Monty's March, and now I can tell you about the end result, on November twenty-third. And the students held our own version of Monty's March to support the cause of food insecurity. This event was coordinated by the fourth grade in conjunction with their food drive. I'd like to thank all who participated in the march and the food drive. We were able to donate five hundred pounds of food to the Amherst Survival Center. And Chief Samin, Samin was kind once again to come and let the kids fill his crucia, which seems to be the highlight of the whole event. The children. We were finally able to have another winter concert. First time since December two thousand nineteen, which feels like a decade ago. And there were performances by the band and strings group, as well as performance by each class. Our new music teacher, Liffa Vincent, had been working with students since the beginning of the school to teach folk songs, dances, and games from around the world. The whole thing was fabulous, and we're so pleased that so many families were able to join us. It was a packed house. I don't know if you guys are both here. Standing around, which was wonderful to see. And we're very fortunate to have our, our little music team, Mrs. Carano. Megan Carr, Carl Knapp, who is the long-term stud for Mary Jo Cheryl. And it's not easy to step in particularly into that role. Where he's continuing the work with students that she began. He's doing a fabulous job in our new music teacher, who sees all the students in the school. The fact that she was able to teach each class, including the preschool kids, a little song and dance routine that they could perform was pretty amazing. And, and I thought it was awfully cute.
Very cute.
This past Friday, we began our second agenda genius hour. Genius hour is a time that is set aside during which students choose what they would like to learn about and how they would like to engage in the learning. We first began genius hour in January of two thousand twenty. It was so exciting to watch students dive into their own passion and interest. We were nearing the conclusion of our genius hour sessions when March fifteenth arrived, and students were sent home for the rest of the year. As a result, we never got to the genius hour fair, when all students would showcase their projects for each other and for families. This year, we're hoping to avoid such a situation. Students will engage in genius hour every Friday for the next six weeks. A genius hour fair will be held when all projects have been completed. And I unfortunately couldn't be here on Friday when it was kicked off, but I came into so much excitement from kids who wanted to talk to me about what it is that you're going to get emails over the weekend from kids who wanted to know if there are certain things that they could do. Can I bring my sewing machine in and pick it up? Which is, it's great to do that, kind of excited. It fits well on Friday afternoons because teachers had, there's a routine that happens during early release Fridays. And so they're able to keep that routine, and we have that happening on Friday afternoon. And the, the great part about it in my mind is that the entire school is doing this all at the same time. And there's no other time during the day or during the week when every child in the school is doing the same thing. So it's kind of cool that they're all, they're all engaged.
Will families be able to go to the fair?
Assuming that we can have one. I never saw that coming last time. I don't think anybody did. It was disappointing in a lot of ways because those students who had a hard time choosing a project because they couldn't really understand what it could be. We were hoping that the fair would allow some kids to see where other kids had taken it, so that the next time we did it, they would be like, oh, now I get, you know, what this can be. So we did not have that. I had, for the longest time, a cafeteria filled with all the projects. It was the sad, it was one of the saddest things that was happening at that, at that time. So we're very excited to have that. That, to me, is the, the biggest piece, is to have that fair where not only families can come in, but we'll make sure that every class has a chance to see every other class's projects. So very excited about that.
And is that K through twelve? I mean, six.
It is K, it's K through six. Pre-K, unfortunately, they're, they're busy at that time of the day, sleeping.
That's very important.
And project time is very much what pre-K is all day. I don't feel like they're missing out on that, that kind of learning. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Do we know? Okay. And now the fun stuff.
Yay.
Yes, I printed, I'm worried I don't know if we have a full copy of it. Okay, so FY twenty-four budget. Yay.
Yay.
Here we are. We started planning in November, as you know, based on our calendar. So input from Chrissy is collected, as well as from other administrative staff. So that includes facilities, special education, technology, curriculum. Darius and myself looking at previous year's history. And then we go through a specific process to make sure that we're level funded. So level funded is replicating all of our programs and staffing from the prior year. Did I say level funded or level service? Sorry, I'm getting over being sick also. So we start with level services, which doesn't mean level funded, was the point that I wanted to make, because we do build in COLA adjustments and STEP increases where necessary, whether that's for salaries and wages, and then COLA also for some other non-salary expenditures such as utilities. So the first step of our process is looking at the contractual and non-contractual wage increases. So we are in year two of the contract currently, which is a two percent raise for teachers. Did IAs have two this year as well? Okay, thank you. And then there's also STEP increases, so that's important to remember as well. So anyone that's not on the highest STEP on either salary schedule is looking at two percent plus their STEP. So it averages out to about five percent if you are stepping for an increase on the teacher and IA contracts. So we're looking at a total wage increase above, of about fifty-six thousand dollars to the budget. That's made up of teachers, IAs, school-based staff, and then central office staff. I think it's important to note that one percent increase is eighteen thousand dollars. So when we're starting off as the first step of this process with a fifty-six thousand dollar increase, we're almost at three percent already. So that's really critical to keep in mind as we go through here to see how quickly the budget can increase. So the next step that we take is looking at different expense accounts to make sure that we have enough funds budgeted from the prior years. So anything that's been way over in prior years or been way under. And then also considering the market and inflation, as we know currently right now, the cost of goods is significantly higher than it's been in prior years. So we are looking at about a thirty thousand dollar increase to non-salary expenditures. A big chunk of that is sick buybacks retirement. So we have one retirement payout. This is repetitive for Waitly. There's typically one every year. Last year, we paid this from school choice. It's my recommendation that we move this off of school choice and consider general fund or another funding source if that's possible, because our school choice funds that we're going to talk about a little bit later are being depleted. We're spending more than we're bringing in. So if we continue to carry this one-time expense, although it is a good spot to pay that from, because in a year that we don't have it, we save that school choice money. We just don't have the reserves that we need, and I'm getting a little bit fearful that we're overusing. So the remaining ten thousand increase is really for supplies and materials, so general supplies, which is education related, as well as just supplies for the building. Paper is costing us more, it goes kinds of things. As well as some adjustment for facilities expenses, including supplies and materials for janitorial expenses. And then we needed an adjustment for grounds and trash removal. Those two contracted services have been going over budget for several years. Small amounts, nothing significant, but I think it's time, after multiple years of overages, to kind of rectify that account and, and make it flush. And then a thirty-five hundred dollar increase to transportation costs, that again is for the fuel adjustment that's in the contract. And the cost of living is adjustment that's in the contract, both of which we have talked about already. So the next step is looking at special education drivers. There isn't going to be an impact of a general fund for special education expenses. We do have special education expenses in Waitly, such as specialized transportation. However, they are paid from another funding source. So there's no impact of the general fund for out-of-district placement or special education transportation. The revolving funds and grant revenues is another big step in this process. So we look at each revolving fund, which for Waitly is school lunch, school choice, and early childhood. We make sure that the expenses that we've paid in the prior year can be paid with the revenue that we're anticipating. This is a big factor for Waitly's budget process this year, because the early childhood account can no longer carry two IA wages that have been paid from that fund for several years. The reason for that is that our enrollment, it has not declined. We've stayed steady. Classrooms are full. The classroom, there's only one here, is full. However, we are seeing an increase in special education students in the preschool program. That means that we're having to provide more services for free versus bringing in tuition from families. That's been a pattern over the last several years. So you know, we had a huge dip with COVID. And then we've brought in more special education students. So this year, revenue is down. Next year, the projections are looking to be about five to eight thousand dollars less as well, based on what we know we have for incoming three-year-olds. This year, that will still be enrolled next year.
You know, they're residents. Just make sure that you, they're not school choice that the town's paying for, the preschool. Those are resident students who have special.
Do the sending towns pay for the school choice specially? We don't have any.
Save students who need services for pre-K. They have to.
Yeah.
If they can, they can come here for preschool.
But services from.
Services have to be taken care of from the sending town.
And do we get more money from the state for special ed, or is it?
We do get money from the state. They are factored into the foundation budget. But you're only counted, they give you for, a credit for a half a day student, not a full-day student, even if the child comes full day. And they also, we are also in Waitly in that Hold Harmless Clause, which is a part of Chapter Seventy that's, I don't want to go down a huge rabbit hole, but basically, unless your enrollment is growing, you're only getting that thirty-dollar per people increase anyway. So even though they are technically counting them in our budget, it's not adding a significant amount.
And that half, that half day is on the political side of things. Superintendents have been concerned about state legislators about, you know, it is a full-day program. It's not what it was fifteen, twenty years ago, or even before. That they really need to count that as a full day, whatever. So again, it's, it's a shift. If you move the entire state, it's a, it's a big shift. You know, money-wise, but it is a political point where it's kind of like, you know, we're providing full-day programs. You're only considering half-day. Not that they would change the funding by a ton statewide. It maybe it's a big impact on education, but I'm just saying that those are conversations that are happening. You're like, why is it like that? Well, people are talking about it, but, you know, it's, it's a slow, Chapter Seventy is a mess. The formula of funding is a mess and so.
So you said the early childhood account no longer carry two IA salaries. It can't carry either, or can't carry one?
Can't carry either of those. So it will be paying for, let me look, I think it's a full teacher salary still, but the two IAs that had previously been paid from that account. It, we just don't have, I'll show you. Actually, we can skip ahead. If you guys.
Will that change down the road?
So it's all dependent upon enrollment. So if we see a shift and the needs of the community change, and we're not servicing as many students with special education needs, we can take more students that.
So that's the driver is this, is the special education part of this is why we can't.
Right, correct.
Take care of the IAs, basically, right?
Correct. So those, and are those kids, those kids will be here in the next year, two years, or?
So some of them will stay, some of them move on to kindergarten, depending on their age, but it's also based on what we know is coming in mid-year. So students that turn three stay in March.
And remember the purpose of it. So they, they're, again, they're Waitly residents, and that early intervention is extremely important. So you know that that's how we move kids, come kids off, special education plans, because early intervention and such. So again, when you're saying they're moving on here, they would be the residents.
No, I was just wondering if like they're four and they're going to kindergarten next year, you know, like the age of the kids.
So if you flip down to page five there, we can, we can flip and talk about the early childhood revolving fund. So if you look at the start of twenty-four, we're looking at only having twenty-six thousand available. The projected revenue is fifty-seven thousand, and our expenses are still eighty thousand. So we're looking at really depleting most of our funds from that account, which is not a good spot for us to be in. Because if there's an emergency expense that comes up, if we have a really high-need student come in, if we need to hire a one-to-one IA, we don't have any cushion in this fund. This is a very uncomfortable place for me. We're going to talk about some options. How to possibly support this as I continue through the presentation. But just looking at the revenue expenses, you can see we're not bringing in even enough to cover the minimal amount. This is, this is a teacher salary and then some minor expenditures for little bit of supplies and materials, snack, you know, little things like that, couple thousand dollars.
This has that one teacher salary and if the two IAs removed, okay.
Yeah. So anyone else have questions before we keep going? Okay, so we'll flip back to the first page, or the second page, I'm sorry. So you can see, you know, there's this theme here. Like I said, that one percent is eighteen thousand. We started at fifty-six with wages. Thirty thousand in non-expenses, forty-eight thousand in additional wages for IAs that are existing. This is existing staff, not new staff. You know, you can do the math quickly in your head. That number's creeping up there. And we haven't talked about new initiatives yet, which we're going to talk about next. And this is also an important part of the budget process. That we want to consider what new needs the school has moving forward, so that we can continue to enhance programs and increase our offerings, which makes us more attractive for residents and non-residents. You know, school choice is a big part of our community. And we want to make sure that we're continuing to bring those factors in. So there were two new initiatives that were discussed this year as part of the budget process Chrissy brought to Darius and I. One was a point-five FTE academic interventionist position, so that would be on the teacher contract. And then the other is an increase that came up last year during budget season as well, and was taken off the table last year, and that's to increase physical education from point four to point six. If you have specific questions about the interventionist position, I would absolutely defer to Chrissy on that. The PE I know is to give students an additional day of PE, or to give everyone.
Yeah, that one day. Right now we're getting, I can't get any classes until one day.
So who doesn't get two days?
He doesn't get any.
Okay.
They, they get obstacle course on, on Wednesday with the physical therapist, but they do not get physical ed. I mean, they get, they're outside playing all the time. But they missed out on Mr. Tara.
Academic interventionist, what kind of a qualification or what? Is that a teacher?
Yeah, what is the definition of that?
Psychologist.
No, no, no. Ideally, someone who could flex between providing a math intervention for students who are struggling a little bit. Or a reading intervention. It's not always possible to find that in the same person, but that would be my, my ideal, so that we could look at exactly what's going on for students and develop groups around that.
We, we have a reading teacher, don't we?
We have, Wendy Will is our reading specialist. Since COVID, she's had her hands full with initially first and second grade, and now first, second, and third grade, because that's where we kind of, because it's the most obvious that kids weren't in school in front of their, their teachers. Obviously, the younger kids couldn't access online learning as well as the older kids. Not that the older kids had an easy time of it either. But that's where we're seeing the, the big gaps. So she, at one time, had the availability to work with maybe a fourth-grade group of students in reading. She's really focused on one, two, and three, and, and past the mid-year, she gets involved in kindergarten as well. But in terms of filling those gaps that were a result of COVID. We have a very close eye on first, second, and third grade.
So there's, at this time, there's no interventionist for math that would take kids out into special groups. And does this position exist at any of the other three elementary schools? They have some. I mean, when I went here, we had a math, there was a math teacher that took kids out of the class and.
That Mrs. H.
It was, she did that.
Yep.
So Shelley, you're saying it's a forty-one thousand dollar increase with these two asks. Can you break that in half, what each one would be?
Yep. So the PE teacher, I believe, is about twelve thousand dollars. And then the balance is the interventionist position.
The, the PE, that's just adding an extra day for him?
Is there anybody in-house that's point something, take care of any of these jobs to give them more time, or is this going to be totally new, new positions?
The interventionist would be a new. And I haven't had a chance to go back, but someone who's been here long, who I have, said that at one time there was money earmarked for a math interventionist, and then something happened and it never, ever came to be. And there wasn't one here when I started here. The PE position, there's some hurdles there. At first, we would have to approve the funds, and then I would have to figure out how that's going to work, because our current is ed teacher is here two days a week and then shoots straight the other three days a week. So he does not have additional time, but I figured the first thing to do is to get it funded and then figure out how to, how to fill the.
It'd be tough trying to bring in a, a second PE teacher if we already have one that's doing two days a week. And then this person would do what?
Point two.
Point.
Would be one day.
One day.
But to go to the next paragraph.
Should talk about this.
Right, right. Before you go down the rabbit hole, we're trying to show the.
The big picture.
I did not read on.
But I think it's important to know.
Yeah, I know, what we're giving up.
It's important that the interventionist, what I think is going to be more important is that right now, the special ed education is handled by upper and lower special ed teacher. And as we're seeing an increase in those needs, some of the, you know, some of the special ed intervention where we had cases where students may or may not have qualified, but we have a small school, so we use a special ed teacher to help out. Correct me if I do anything wrong here. You know, as we have more needs coming in, those kids are not going to be able to be picked up as easily by those things. So if, if we can't do this, you're going to look at the numbers. Doing it this year is going to be difficult. But it is something for us to keep in the back of our mind as we plan long-term, you know. As we track the number of special ed students coming to pre-K and then going to kindergarten and that kind of stuff, if we do see that spike, then we're going to have to, the general ed students will not be able to take from the resource of the special ed for those who are struggling.
So yes, jumping ahead to the, you know, drum roll please. All of these factors taken into consideration, that first draft of the budget came in at nine point two percent. We all took a deep breath after seeing that number as part of the budget process and you know, realistically knew that that wasn't going to be something that we could bring forward to the town. We just talked about all of those pieces because we want you to understand what the needs actually are. I think it'll be important for the town to hear that as well, but we also understand that we have to be fiscally responsible. So we did eliminate the forty-one thousand dollar request for the point-five interventionist, and then the point-two increase for the PE teacher. That was taken off the chopping block for STEP. And then we also made an adjustment to decrease nine thousand five hundred of the non-salary expenses. So basically, all of that talk that I just did about supplies and materials being increased, we just took that off the board and we'll make do. We'll use grant funds if we can find some, or.
Because I haven't touched anything else if I was stood here.
So with that said, we are presenting the first draft of the budget today at six point six one percent. It's an increase of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars. This is still a significantly high number. The total budget for general fund. Why don't we include that in here? I'll add that in for us for next time. At that six point six one, the total general fund budget would be two million, thirteen thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars. And Waitly would use an additional four hundred, three thousand dollars from revolving and grant funds to fund the total budget, which is about two point four million. This is still a, a high number, you know, six point one. I know historically you guys have, have brought a number of around six to the town. I think, was it in nineteen or twenty? Two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty.
One of those years. But that was also correction to our school choice issue. We're trying to, we're adjusting the budget to move things off school choice and.
So there's sort of a repeat factor here. While we're not talking necessarily about school choice being fully depleted, we are talking about a different revolving fund. So it's the same concept where, you know, we're not bringing in enough revenue to cover the expenses that have been paid from that fund. There's a lot of data on the next couple of pages of this report, page three and four. I don't need to go over all of those. I'm happy to take questions about any of it. The, the points that I will make is that salaries and wages are always the driving factor. Salaries make up about eighty-three percent of the budget. The rest is, you know, very minor percent is non-salary related. Enrollment wise, we are seeing a little bit of an increase in enrollment. We're up from last October. If you look on the bottom of page four, you can see the enrollment data there. If there's no specific questions about that data, then we can move on to.
Just a question on the, on the two that we're, that we deleted already to it. We're not going to have to go out for outside services or anything like that, which would cost us more money to take care of, even if it's one child. We're not going, we're not going to have to go outside for outside services for any of this, right?
Not as a result of not having that position. I can't say that there's not going to be something that comes up that requires us to go.
Right. I, I just, I just wanted to delete something.
Pointed out, what it, what it leaves us is classroom instruction for students with an IEP who get special education services and not that piece in between that is support. And we, we find ways to provide support as best we can, but an ideal situation would be to have someone who is specifically trained to be an interventionist.
It sounds like that position for those in between could help keep kids off the IEPs.
An interventionist doesn't just work with students, it also works with the teacher. It says, you know what, okay, so you're teaching this math lesson. The reason why we're seeing some kids missing is, is you're not doing enough visuals with byproducts. Your solace is here. So it's, it's kind of a mutual support. So, but you know, at least that's how we're doing it in other countries. It's kind of, it's not just a, just pull out services or that kind of thing.
So I guess the short answer, Bob, is no. Not as a result of not having that position, but there are other.
Factors of though.
Right, and, and I, it's hard to know at any time, which makes it difficult if there's going to be a, a new student who shows up and needs outside services, or if one of our kind of students develops a need for something beyond what we have here already.
Understand.
And I think it's, I think where we're at here, and so you can jump in, because I know she had down a little bit, is that that would be ideal, not the ideal like utopia ideal, but ideal like if we had the funds, what we would do with it right now. Us not putting the funds there doesn't put us in a disadvantage. I think other people, we'll figure out other means of getting it there. We'd pound the table if that was, we'd say if we really did that in here and we had to put it in the budget, and then we'd have to cut somewhere else to get that in there. I just want to kind of say that we, you know, because we're not fighting for it, it's kind of, not saying that's not, we're not trying to put in a utopian idea out there, but it is one that will be okay, you know what I mean? But it's good to understand and have those conversations about, you know, when you go to the store, what you're not buying, that kind of thing.
It's on, it's on our wants list.
Right. It's kind of more of a needy want, but we can, we can figure it out without.
I, I do have a question about enrollment. In the past, we've had more like eighteen to twenty, twenty-one kids per class.
In the past, we've had more like eighteen to twenty, twenty-one kids per class. Is there any time you see us going back to that number? When we could take more kids from.
Well, our kindergarten class is twenty this year, which is. In order to bring in more school choice, um, I went a little higher than I normally would like to do with kindergarten.
But that's not, we're not turning folks away.
No.
Your first choice. Outside of that class. So it's not like, I mean, the, the cap, we haven't got a cap on it to expand this class up. Those are just natural where the classes are right now, outside of the kindergarten.
Can the, the group of kids that will be in first grade next year, um, I would like to leave that twenty.
So that's the only one that we're not kicking, except anymore with the other ones classes.
Is that the class that we knew we had a lot of residents?
Yeah. Anything else before we?
Okay.
All right, so on page five, um, just a little recap here. Um, the major draggers in this year's first draft increase are the fifty-six thousand dollar increase for employee raises. Um, the twenty thousand dollar increase for employee separation costs, which is our retirement sick buyback payout. And then the forty-eight thousand, which is due to two additional IAs being put on the budget. Not new staff, existing staff moving from revolving fund to general fund. Reminder that one percent is about eighteen thousand dollars. And in order to reduce our budget, say you all were comfortable with a three percent, that's what we said we wanted to bring to the town. We would have to reduce an additional sixty-eight thousand dollars on top of the forty-one that we've already cut off.
Which is the retirement and the, the two IAs.
Yeah, exactly. So it, I mean, if, this is difficult in a small school, you're really seeing clearly that. The first piece of this work raises for our staff, which we can't have a school without our staff. Our staff is amazing and everybody deserves the raises, but that is immediately, that's our three percent right there.
That's in the contract.
That's in the contract and it's non-contractual staff. So our custodians, our cafeteria staff, which all play equally important roles in, in the functioning of the school. So um administrative staff, central office staff, that's all built into that. So um it's hard for any of our schools. Everybody's gonna be facing the same challenges here, Wheatley's not on its own here. Um, but, you know, that three percent increase, if that's our goal, we can't really do anything else. Which is not funny, but.
Shelley, can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
So where it says early childhood FY end of year. With that tiny little number.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that if the IAs remain?
No.
And then that's all we're left with, even if we move them off.
It's not a comfortable spot for us to be at. One teacher's salary is in there.
Yep. I, when I looked at this the first time, I thought that was based on if we continue. Currently.
That, the expenditures for that account cover a teacher and then some minor expenses, non-salary related.
Running off the projections that we have now, you could have more residents without needs that are full paying, that could adjust that one way. Or go the opposite way, we could have more residents that aren't paying. Good needs, so, so that could get better.
Yeah.
And all non-residents pay a tuition. Correct, no matter what, no matter what, right?
And a lot of residents pay tuition, but not if their child receives special education services.
So the other revolving fund I gave you here is school choice. Uh, I think that quickly, just important to look at that, you can see again, it's a similar theme to early childhood, although not as extreme. Where our revenue is exceeding our expenditures, so we are eating into some of our surplus. Which is why I'm recommending that that twenty thousand employee separation costs that we previously paid from school choice. We move off because that bottom line at the end of next year at a hundred and fifty thousand would be a hundred and thirty thousand. And again, we're getting into that spot of being uncomfortable where we don't have one year uh in arrears of revenue saved. And if we do have an out-of-district placement, that's fifty, sixty, eighty thousand dollars. We're really gonna be hard pressed to um cover those expenditures. So uh we certainly could talk about keeping that retirement on school choice. Uh, school committee has made that in the past, made that decision in the past. Um, but just so you see what those numbers look like, you know, if we bring in more students, revenue goes up. But this is based on prior year and um projections of where our October enrollment was.
So that twenty thousand, that's for someone's retiring, correct?
Okay.
Retired.
Yes, okay.
Someone retired this past year.
Yeah, it's not a new.
If they don't let us know before September, September, what is it, September or October?
I think it's October first.
Yeah, um, they was, they have to take it the following year, cause we didn't have time to budget it. So that's, this is a person retired last year.
Um, I, I suppose that's something to consider, but we won't know until we're closer to the end of the year.
Yeah.
Um, we, we might know by the time, did everyone hear Maureen's question? Is there a way to take money from this year if there were savings and earmark that and put it away to pay for this expense? Um, which is a great idea.
So it is one of the, we, we talked, so there are different, we can go into our solutions now, right?
Yes, we can, yeah.
So there's different. Either, there's different ways to move. Usually we're different, you have different styles of money that we can go for, you know, in a sense of. One is, we don't know where the town stands um with the funding from the state, so we don't know what their budget looks like yet. Um, and this is a budget where we do wanna have conversations with probably the finance committee. Um, so they have an understanding of what we're doing, because some of our assumptions are not long-term fixes, okay? Um, you know, you started by talking about moving the twenty K, either pulling it from school choice, okay? Or you could also ask the town to put it separately and for them to pay for it out of free cash, so it doesn't increase the budget, the annual budget, but it's being paid for. Um, and then the third um outside influx of money that we haven't talked about is that we do have some S R money to spend. Okay, no, S R was the, the reminder is that the money that came COVID was S R one, two, and three. I have too many budgets in my head, S R two is a, um, what's available that's not already.
That's a really good question. Most of S R two, there's about thirty thousand left for Wheatley, but most of it is earmarked, so I don't think it gives us much.
Of an option.
That's for the town.
So you have ARPA went to the town, um, and then S R went to the schools. And so um it is also a conversation with the town about how are they spending the ARPA money? And are they looking to pick up any of our capital projects with the ARPA money? This is where we kind of have to work together, because oh, the S R money has certain things, there are only certain things you can pay for. So we would be moving, we'd be shifting our budgets around, so S R three has significantly more money in it. Um, which is, I think, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, I have my notes here. And some of that is also earmarked, because you have to spend it, some of it on certain things that are pandemic-related. But there's also some, you can also ask for an appeal, or you can also, um, you know, put into areas that we expect. We have to use that money by September of twenty-four.
Which, which one?
S R three.
S R three. Two has to be done by next, by twenty-three.
By?
S R two, two has to be September of twenty-three, S R three, September of twenty-four. So we have um within this new budget, we'll have eighteen months to spend that money. We purposely held money back on this, the state doesn't like um that schools are using it to offset budgets. Superintendents are fighting back like, you're funding us short, especially our Western Mass, Eastern Mass don't have this kind of problem. Um, but we've been, a lot of our neighboring districts talking with us have been saving it, because we've always been one budget to the next. So we could take a portion out of S R, therefore we'd be saving school choice money. It pushes the problem down the road. And that's just something that we have to know, we have to explain to other folks that. But that's kind of how small schools have worked, I'm not afraid of doing that, cause what else are we gonna spend the money on? You know, we could have done some capital projects with it, uh, new initiative with it. The actual interventionist would have been perfect um use of that money. Um, over multiple years to spend for that, because, you know, it is, you know, you could say it's COVID-related. But, so the, so the idea is to use this outside, some of this outside blocks of cash. Um, that's kind of where we, that's kind of our presentation in the sense of uh where we're at. We didn't go through and just map all that out, um, it's really about understanding the landscape and whatever. So we, there is a bailout this year and um, you know.
This year.
This year, right. And so next year you'll have what's bailed out, plus the growth in the budget again. And so um. And what will next year bring, I don't know, we may have other moving parts in the budgets, you know what I mean? You could have. You can have staff that, you know, comes and goes, it changes their budget, you can have, you know, who knows what the state's coming out with? You know, are they gonna do other kinds of types of funding? Um, you know, there's always been, there's always something coming. But it's also, they couldn't come, and then we could be in a more difficult position next year where the only way to make budget is reduce budget. You know, but my recommendation is that we use some of S R to bring this down. And we're not making that decision tonight.
Do we know what we have to, to bring it down? Like what kind of a number? Cause you said S R two was already earmarked.
So, so really, she's saying we should really look at S R three, we might be able to take a few grand from S R two based on what we don't spend. But S R three is one fifty-five, some of that has been earmarked. We've been using it for, to pay for summer school and um.
So there's a certain percentage that has to go towards um mental health support that's required, so we have to spend that, which is primarily being spent on. Um, consultants, uh, we're using it to help fund um stipends for various things throughout the year. That goes directly to teachers, uh, summer programming, um, which I know Wheatley combines with Deerfield. But we do have to pay, help pay for some of those expenditures for the program at Deerfield. Um, so we could at least pay the two IA wages and take that forty-eight thousand off of the budget. Um, the employee separation costs, that's not an expense that would qualify under S R. That doesn't mean that we can't pay for, you know, an S R expense.
Some other way.
Some other way and, you know, kind of move the different styles of money around to cover that extra twenty thousand as well. Um, but fifty cents for those two IAs, we absolutely can manage that. Um, I'm meeting with Laura and Sarah uh tomorrow morning? Or maybe it's after this meeting to go over all of this and re-map out the plan. Um, not just for Wheatley, but district-wide on the S R spending. Now, that would only pay for their salaries for next year, then we'd have a problem the year after and after that.
And I think, I think we're gonna have, correct me if I'm wrong, I think our final year of the contract is three percent, so. Oh, is it three two two? Okay.
That's so.
At least you have an idea.
Yeah.
Right, and it, and it is, we think that it hit especially hard because of the amount of staff that's on steps. You know what I mean, so.
This year.
Well, it might be, it might be next year until they reach the top, and then they're only, they're not getting staff plus coal. Um, and that, that's a factor of, you know, um, so we talk about every time we're in negotiations, that kind of stuff, is that, is that kind of thing. So um, yeah, so it's understanding that, that's, Wheatley got hit the hardest. When you look at just coal alone, percentage to budget of, of the four towns, just kind of knowing where you're standing with other people. Anyway, so you're just kind of knowing that it's, it is the, your staff is a living, of course, it's a living thing, but it's also a living thing, it goes up and down year to year and that kind of thing. So um, our preschool next year, you know, so you look at what could happen next year that'll help the budget. Preschool could be had more funding, you know, by new students coming in, that's a small kind of adjustment. School choice numbers could be changed by some, could go the other way too, you know, um.
We don't have a retirement.
If you have a retirement, you could have savings in your retirement, or, you know, or if you don't have retirement, you have to buy out, it's one or the other, flip to the other.
I mean, the preschool really is a, a unknown, you know, if you look back to two thousand seventeen, eighteen, even nineteen. Revenue was up like thirty thousand dollars more than what we have right now, because there were less students with special needs. So, you know, it, it ebbs and flows.
Right, and then we've, so we, we play that game, right? So preschool suddenly made a lot of money, then we would start paying for an IA, then offsetting the other budget. You know, and so you gotta make sure you, you know, you slow down the other budgets if you're offsetting with other stuff, but.
And the services, the services for the kids that need the extra services doesn't kick in till it reaches. Per kid like, what, twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand or something like that? Circuit breaker?
Yeah, it's above.
So it costs, I mean, you have to.
Yeah, I mean, circuit breaker really only comes to play if you have a big out-of-district placement, otherwise your in-house costs just aren't gonna add up to enough.
Yeah, so that's the, you know, that's what we're. It's kind of where we're at today, and so, but for the next meeting, um, we'll map out, if you want us to go that way.
At least we have an idea. So if we took, did you write it down? I, I forgot, did, if you took the sixty-eight thousand dollars away, what would the, what would the percentage be? You said like three point. Cause we should be, just be ready.
I think you said three percent, three point oh one.
Okay. I know in the case of best father who's always big on the schools and taking care of the kids if they need extra services. You know, we probably would have best fathers backing as the finance person um at, in the town. To help with the different services at six point six one. But if we get backlash, at least we have a, we have a backup that, to help if we had to with the S R money. If, you know. I'd rather not use the.
I, I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking that we're, I think we were talking about bringing that budget down to around three, not coming up.
Okay.
That's what we're presenting to you where it's at six, and then we're saying, how do you bring this down? I mean, bottom line is the S R money is gonna go away, and so.
But we're also gonna have that same bill.
Yeah.
I, I know we're gonna have maybe extra money next year, but eventually, eventually it's gonna, it's gonna get caught up.
Eventually we're gonna get caught, and so the conversation is, you know, what is the numbers at the time which we get caught? May, in, in every school plays this game, and, you know, I was on Pelham School Committee for many years where. You, they said next year was gonna be the fiscal cliff, and then there was another way of bailing out, and the next year's gonna be a fiscal cliff, and then there's a way of bailing it out. And, you know, when you look at the state, they don't have, I say the state, when I'm talking about the one the commissioner was speaking to us, you know. He, you know, basically, they don't have sympathy for Western Mass problems, you know what I mean? And they, their thing is just regionalized. Like that's gonna solve the problems, you know what I mean? And that's not, you know, and so we're not gonna go to that kind of a solution until the bit, you know, the bitter end, so to speak. Um, and maybe that bitter in, in that wall, I mean, that cliff does get, keeps getting pushed. And there are new ways of, you know, doing things and that kind of thing, so, but um, that S R money, we don't have it earmarked for other programs.
I mean, that's good, I mean, if, if there were, I mean, you have to look at what's the greatest, what's the greatest thing that we need it for? Do we need it for the sixty-eight thousand, or, or do we need it? Does Chrissy need it for something else that drastically need in the school? I know we.
And the, well, the positive side is that the building, well, is in good shape. There's not like, it's like, we weren't sitting here like, oh, we really need that sixty-eight thousand to replace the boiler. And we could, you can actually use S R money for.
And we have all the new insulation. We have, we have all the new insulation, which must be, is there any?
Well, that's coming from the town, the town's paying for that from our, that's why I say it's important to understand what they are willing to. Because what they're willing to give, you know, as far as capital expense, that kind of stuff, cause we're not coming to them. I mean, our capital request this year are, I might, and I did submit, you know, it's about ten thousand dollars to start the bathrooms. To do bathrooms, set the bathrooms, and we're gonna do it over the next three years. Bathroom floors. And they just, the tiles are just not sanitary anymore and um, they need to be done. Um, and, and then the other one is the A C. But the A C is, I submitted it knowing that it's part of right now, the town's taking on that by insulating first and then bringing in A C and. It's also heaters.
How will we, how, is there any data that we know for, of course, this is a mild winter. But do we have any data after all this new insulation they're putting in? Is there any, do we have any data on energy use? I mean.
We'll not hear that.
I, I mean, but will we?
We can, we can do like everybody can do in their homes, with their energy report, with their consumption.
I didn't, yeah, that's how I was.
Has that been, yeah, insulation?
I don't know if it's completed, but it started. Yeah.
Really?
Well, like the pre-work, they've been here and they've been poking around up in the, I don't know what they're doing up there, um.
I thought this was done last, I know there was a delay on a lot of things and materials and stuff like that, but I thought it was gonna be done last summer, but I guess not.
No, they've, they've been here and they've scoped out, the attic is not an easy space.
Yeah.
To navigate, there are parts. To navigate. There are parts you can walk through and there are other parts, um, as described, cause I, I've. I've peeked up there and that's as far as I wanna, as I wanna go, but it's tricky when you get over cafeteria and religion. So they've spent some time up there. Trying to figure out. How the insulation is gonna go. Probably trying to figure out how they're gonna get their equipment up there.
And then a few years ago, we had issues with the roof and then we were gonna be doing ongoing maintenance, so that wouldn't happen again. That's still happening and already budgeted for, right?
But it also goes into where we were trying to increase the maintenance line. You know, I think we fixed that. Actually, we fixed that in the budget a few years ago. We had that in the budget because of that line, because they have to go up there and refasten.
Screws weren't long enough and.
So for the town grant money, the ARPA, we've currently only asked them for capital improvement. Projects, something physically.
The only live capital improvement we ask for is the ten thousand dollars for the, the floor. That we're controlling. Right now, because they started doing the insulation project, they're kind of controlling the heating and cooling kind of thing. And whether or not they, they haven't been. Um, I say the town, cause there's different, different committees running different things and I don't know who's running. The ARPA committee has not met. Cause you were on that for a while, has not met with some regular, regularness and that kind of stuff, um, about what is their plan? Are they planning on doing some of the A C with that or not?
Right. Are you meeting with them again?
I haven't heard of, so I'm, I'm going to the town. Offices this morning, so.
Do you know? How much there is and when they have to spend it by, cause there has to be.
I, I, I heard, I, as far as I remember, there was a lot of money still, but they were trying to, I think they're trying to stretch it out for two years. So that's, they're gonna try to spend so much this year and spend so much will come, will come this next year, twenty three, I suppose.
Um, and we have received about thirty three thousand of ARPA funds already. They paid for the capital projects that we requested last year with ARPA funds, which was the dishwasher and then um flooring. And I think some area rugs and things like that you guys bought.
But it's just, again, that's within understanding where their finances are because they're using the ARPA funds, they're not using free cash. I don't know if they. What they, their plans after free cash, but again, to bring this number down. We could use S R funds and then pay twenty thousand dollars in se- employee separation, ask the town for that kind of money. But it's, it's all about how you wanna move the money around, cause it's, it's. Again, then we, next year we'd have some leftover S R money that we would pay for a project that we would went to the town for anyway. So it's just kind of like how you wanna. Where you wanna put your bills and how you wanna pay for it, you know what I mean? And so it may be just cleaner, just to do straight up. You know, pay for it as their money and then next year we won't have any leftover money for a capital project with S R and then we'd have to go to the towns for next year's.
Or these salaries. And we have had.
We're gonna have to, we would have to put the salaries back on budget. Those, those salaries eventually, there's not gonna be that outside funding.
It's those two items though, the, the twenty thousand and the forty eight thousand I A that we have to.
Right.
Is early childhood ever gonna cover those I A costs?
I mean, there would have to be a significant change in the population, which you're probably years out from at this point.
And then it, the problem is if we're at, I'm like, I didn't look at the number. Say if there's twenty kids in there right now. How many more kids can a classroom hold unless you go, unless you go to another, yeah, another I A or two classrooms? I mean, that's, I mean, that's only way you're gonna get enough money to pay, you know, for all these things.
Yeah, so we're gonna see that hit, even if we use S R, which I think that this is a smart use of S R funds. A hundred fifty five thousand for Wheatley is a lot of money. It's a significant percentage compared to our budget and it's. While we do have plans for some of it and we will find a way to spend it because we're certainly not giving it back to the state, this is a good use of those funds. But there's risk involved and we will see when we build the twenty five budget, twenty twenty five, this fifty thousand come back. Onto general fund and we'll have the same conversation next year. And that employee separation cost, I mean, this is a conversation, this is my fourth budget with you all and it comes up every year. How are we gonna pay for this? On the retire, which in some ways, it could be worse. What did I say yesterday? I've seen worse.
I mean, we could be in a situation where if we didn't have it, like in the contract, you know, like giving us a year's notice when you wanna separate, at least you. At least you can plan for. It's not like I'm retiring tomorrow and I need this twenty thousand dollars like. How, I, where are we gonna come up with twenty thousand dollars? You know, we would come up with it, but it's, how would you come up with it, you know? Who are you gonna take it away from?
Yeah, we have had other towns in the district either pay for this piece, the employee separation cost under a separate warrant or. Um, last year, ARPA funds. Um, so it is a possibility, like ARPA cannot, ARPA doesn't have to be just spent on capital projects. So if the town. You know, if we went to the town and said, we have this expense. Can you help us?
Right. The politics of ARPA is that. You only need the select board's approval. You don't need the town's approval. And it's just important to know, because if you take controversial projects where you're not sure how it's gonna go. Sometimes the select boards have been choosing, you know, I'll do, if you, the town needed a new tractor. Everybody likes to debate tractors at town meetings, you know what I mean? You know, they do. It's right. Everybody's got an opinion on tractors. And so. They could paper a shred of ARPA and then say, you know what, we'll put the more, less, the other debatable item on town meeting, you know what I mean? Like. So, but, so I don't know how they're lining things up either.
I thi- I think it's a great idea, like, I'm just watching this little unit up here over here versus. Using a whole furnace. This thing is probably heating this room right now, majority of it, which, okay, what costs more electricity? Or something else. A lot of people are going to their mini splits in this kind of weather to heat their houses.
Well, this, in schools are, schools are, are good for the idea of a mini split because of the amount of days that we come to school where it's chilly in the morning. And moderate during the day, you know, you're, you're September, October.
I'm not sure what it said, but it's, but it's comfortable and I'm not sure if anything else is really heating here, but that's heating the room right now, that, that unit right there. And if, if more, you know, more rooms get these units. I mean, that's, I think overall, over a period of year, that's a big savings. If electricity is less than natural gas or oil. I mean, my daughter lives in Ocean Beach, California, and they have a grid from twelve midnight to twelve or. Whatever is midnight to midnight. This is when you should use your appliances and your dryers. I mean, this is when it's the cheapest. I mean, it's like four different grids. That she just got in the mail and they just went up fifty percent where she lives on electricity. So it's like, you know, we're coming, we're coming to something like that, but California's been like this. My other daughter, she only could do her washer and dryer from like. Four P M to ten P M, cause that was the cheapest electric cost was between those hours to do your laundry.
So, um, I think with next draft, so we have a meeting on the fourteenth of February, so. Oh, right, we wanted to talk about that. Go ahead, jump in.
So I think, so, so I got, uh, uh, Maria, I got a note from Brian. Um, that the, the finance committee wants to talk to us. Prior to our voting of the budget. And, um. We're voting on it on the fourteen. If we, prior to the public hearing, I guess, which is.
Which is the fourteen?
So, no, they asked for the twenty first.
They did ask for February twenty first.
That's, yeah.
And I have jury do that day, so I can't do that either way. That's also during winter break and I don't know what people are running, that kind of stuff.
I think we all got it.
Anyway, right now, the fourteenth is set for four P M. I think we probably should try to have a designated evening to talk about this, the next step of this budget and. Um, ask if we can get a rep.
The twenty first is also during, um, school vacation.
Just vacation week as well. So.
Are we thinking maybe the fourteenth?
Well, the fourteenth frontier is a six P M meeting, so they are. We could look at the fifteenth, the following day.
Or the eighth the week before.
Or the eighth the week before.
I mean, we have to come in here, I'm not sure what the heat's gonna be set at on during school vacation.
I don't know if you even need me there, but I won't be around that week.
The eighth is, multiple things are going on that night. I don't think during vacation week is. The sixth grade frontier thing. One of those tucks. That Laura Ramsey sent out.
Through break, yeah.
Yeah, um. Basketball.
Yeah, I'd say this stuff. Fifteen?
Is this replacing the meeting on the fourteen?
Yes, we're moving to fourteen.
And seeing if. Finance committee can join us, right?
Monday to thirteen?
Would it be easier for the finance committee to come here? Or is it easier for us to go to them and then go into a room and finish our meeting at the town offices or something like that, maybe? I mean, sometimes they don't wanna come to us.
Yeah, I.
If we go to them, get done what they need to do.
Going to their meeting.
Well, if we, if, yeah, if they wanna see us.
Have to post it as a meeting, so it's gonna be our meeting. It's just gonna be in a different, if we're doing it with them, they're gonna post a meeting too if they're coming.
Cause they're not gonna come here. Your father may come here for a meeting or something, but typically. Yeah, they're not gonna come unless we go to them and that way we could put, maybe at that time present, be nice with them. Select board was there too at the same time. Kill two birds.
Yes. They, they wanna have a joint meeting with all of us and all.
Did they suggest a date?
Yeah, they suggested the twenty first. Um, which. Sounded like that wasn't gonna work either. It's during school vacation and, um, Darius has something.
I guess it's a period during the day, but, um.
Well, what if we, can we ask Brian if a couple of dates work and then settle there?
Yeah.
Let's look at two. So one, in a, I have to explain then that front, maybe you don't know the frontier assessment, so they only have happy. I know it's not this committee's problem, but just so you guys know that. This, the, the governor's budget's not gonna come on for the first week of March and so we won't have a gen, you know, obviously it's a conservative. The more conservative the budgets, but we, we won't have the assessments, you know, we're running some scenarios through. Stuff that Shelley's put together, but we can't, you know, so we can start the budget process, but we can't share that publicly without knowing what the assessments are. So, um, so we could do, we could go to the final week in February. It's a long. Wait, but right now our budget. How we're gonna solve it is pretty straightforward, you know what I mean? Um. And we're not, it doesn't appear that, right, there's no cuts on the table and that kind of stuff where it's gonna be a lot more. Interest rather than just. So you could look at like March first, Wednesday, March first, the twenty eighth. Um, I have something personal that day, so, um. I can't do that, but you know.
So if we do March first, aren't we then moving the March seventh meeting? And is our February gonna, meeting gonna be March first?
March seventh, I believe, was gonna be our public hearing. All right, can you see we're doing that?
Yeah, March seventh. But you want completely in frontier back to back? I think we messed up the calendar when.
It's this year.
They used to always be in the morning though.
Right, and then when we said we should move to four.
Because we're gonna have a budget subcommittee meeting for frontier before that, probably. Before the six o'clock frontier meeting.
So we could do. The Wheatley meeting, the March meeting, move it from the seventh to the fifteenth. All right, first let's remember, so if we do March. The February meeting, March first. Okay.
What was, you said something about February, February thirteenth as a possibility?
We could do, we could do Monday the thirteenth.
So we might not have all our information? Is that what we're thinking?
We wouldn't have the frontier budget, but that's just. It is what it is, you know, at least we'll solve the. Wheatley budget that time. You know, we could do is we could say, I sent March, it's February fifteenth. I could present them both and let them decide if we can.
Even on March first, we're not gonna have frontier's budget ready.
Correct.
Either way, they're, they're only getting in this first round, Wheatley Elementary.
Correct. And they won't be able to have. Just, you know, regarding the frontier, they're not gonna be able to have a special session with us because, um. We're going to get, the, we're gonna get March first or March second, the governor's budget. Put it together and have multiple frontier meetings before it has to be approved before the eleventh. So.
So you're gonna be busy then.
So we're gonna, I mean, it, it's just, they need to come to the frontier meeting to see your frontier information. It's just what it is. It's not, it's not frontier's committee's fault, but it was. If we, by our statute, we have to deliver the budget by the eleven to the towns, cause it has to be forty five days out. So frontier, we kind of, and we're gonna talk about them with them tonight, but we're gonna have multiple meetings over a two week period to approve a budget. And so they're not gonna be able to have special sessions. They're gonna have to come to a frontier if they wanna see it. Um, they want an explanation of the frontier budget prior to assending to them officially.
So technically, and why can we present the Wheatley one?
The gov, so we develop our budget for elementary and we basically send the number to the town, right? And the town figures out how they're gonna pay for it based on the number from the state. Frontier can't send the numbers to the town without the state telling us how much money we're getting. Where the town gets, you know, it pays for all its things from its numbers in the town. We know the annual growth, if we're around that percentage, we're gonna be okay. They, and again, they should have an idea, just like we have an idea what frontier is gonna have. We have an idea what the assessments are, but we could be off by a point. In that by point by, yeah, by a percentage point, whi- which is significant. So, they actually, I mean, so frontier can't fill the assessment, so we can't say this is how much you owe, which is what the frontier reps are voting on. They don't just build the budget, they vote what the assessment is and they can say, you know, we can't afford this or we need to move things around or that kind of stuff, so. And we don't have the information to make the assessment until March first or second, when the governor's budget comes out. But because our statute says we have until the eleventh of March, to what the towns know, or else we're in violation of our stat, of our agreement. So that's why that, they're, you know, think where the elementaries are now.
And this is normally a non-issue because usually the governor's budget, it has to come out the last Wednesday in January. But because there's a new governor. They get five extra weeks. Okay, wasn't it late last year too?
It was late last, uh, the governor's wasn't the, uh, the legislative.
So usually we have the governor's budget and we would not have this problem. We'd be ready by mid to late February. But we won't this year.
I mean, the governor's budget is usually the most conservative, you know, but we also had a conservative governor, so I don't know.
All right, so we're offering March thirteen, I mean, February thirteenth or March first to the town.
Does that feel okay with people? You just let them decide which one they wanna go to?
Just tell me when to come.
Monday the thirteenth or. Or Wednesday the first. And there is, you know, as far as other. Right now. Something water on here. Um, there's nothing else that's pending that we need to have a meeting immediately in the next three weeks. There's gonna be a lot of different policies sitting there, that kind of thing. So it's really just, it's budget, budget, budget.
So we're definitely not doing our meeting on, um.
The fourteenth?
The fourteenth.
No, so that's gonna be.
And we're saying whatever day it is that we come to an agreement, it will probably be more like six P M. Cause that's when.
Yeah, these were both, either of these would be at six. If they say six thirty or something like that, but it's gonna be. Does that sound good?
Sounds like a plan.
We're not done yet.
So we finished with budget and timeline?
I'm finished. One down. Four more to go.
And we're probably the smallest one to take. Is anybody?
How many? I think Deerfield, Deerfield was. Bob's asking who else is in bad shape. I think Deerfield's been.
You guys are in a tough one, but you have the, there's a bailout, there's a, there's an escape hatch here on this one, but. I don't know, we haven't had the other ones, so I don't want to say too much.
Like, good, you guys are in this whole process, it's, it's tough. I mean, you can present it. It's up to the school committee and other factors, the town, you know. I'm not sure how much free cash still Deerfield has, so. I shouldn't say free cash, yeah.
Okay, so. We have to decide. How we wanna. Um, where we wanna move these, or have we decided that?
So I'm gonna ask the town to pick one of those bits.
No, I mean, not sorry, not the meeting, but the. The IA salary. And the retirement.
So this is the first read, so basically we're gonna come back with the next one. Um, unless the committee objects to the recommendations right now, so we kind of giving you the recommendations that we're gonna remove those things and. Set up a way to take off the IAs and put it, use Esther funding and show you will develop a. And I'll sheet narrating that, and then we're gonna run the second discussion. Our next meeting with um. You know, with the town as well.
And the south, the uh, retirement too, is that we're gonna ask to put that on an answer or on a warrant? I I think that's still open for discussion. I think it's a good talking point with the town. Um, and then I can take a look and see what other funds might be available.
Right, we'll have a cleaner picture of what Esther's been, we can break down what Esther's already been committed. Um, you know, for summer school and so on and so forth, and those very ones, but again, you have this paperwork, brackets, but we can. Then bring it to town, what, you know, do we pick it up, or do they want to pick it up? And they're gonna want to pick up anything, I mean, we'd want to do something like that, but um, we just have a discussion, right?
So I think the discussion with the town with this particular piece is that. It's not likely that this expense is gonna go away. So how do they want us to handle it? Do we wanna just add this to the budget? And that's growth, and now moving forward, it's part of the budget, or do we continue this conversation every year of how to pay for this expenditure? Cause again, this isn't the first time that we've talked about this, it'll be, it'll add a. One plus percentage point every year.
So, I mean, that'll be a discussion point for the next one, I mean, it's a lot. There's a lot here for you guys to kind of, you know what I mean, so the idea is to. Get a snapshot of where it is, what what's causing the growth, different solutions. Imagine you'll think about it. Stare at the ceiling at night, and then at their next meeting, you know, you know, we're gonna discuss. How we solve it, and we'll have other people in the room. Giving their input as well.
Yeah, it's just tough, cause the preschool program doesn't support itself.
Right, and that's kind of the reality is moving forward, preschool program doesn't support itself.
I think there was only, if I remember right, there was only one year. After paying everything, there was actually a surplus of money that we had, can't tell you what year it was, but but it comes down to services. If you have less services, you have more money, you have more ser, you have to pay out more services, then it's like this year.
Where we're gonna have two thousand. Preschool was half day.
Yes.
Okay, we're ready for this. Okay, so I guess we're ready to move on. To be continued.
We are, okay.
So. The preschool tuition rates and aftercare rates.
So, um, well, so one, one reason why preschool, this is not going to say it solved the preschool problem. But we have not done a market adjustment for um preschool. In quite a while, and so in front of you, I just, excuse me, a copy for you is a comparison to. Other public schools at the top, and then private schools down below for preschool and. Our recommendation is next year. Is to move it to seven dollars. An hour. And that's. Is that forty two per day?
Forty two cents?
Yeah, no, forty two dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh. Yeah, it's thirty five and change right now, isn't it?
Yeah, no, it's thirty eight five.
Oh, thirty eight fifty.
Right, I'm going off memory.
It's like fifty two cents more a day, I think. I mean, an hour, so times six is three fifty, yeah, so thirty eight, it'll be like forty two, yes, you're right.
I just was going up. So we can change that to, to. Forty two per day. And then you can kind of see the breakdown. Comparative prices.
So this increase is driven not because of. Budget, although all of the preschool programs could definitely use an increase in revenue, um, but this is just really driven by the fact that we haven't done a market increase. In some time, so looking at. The market and seeing what our competitors are receiving, um, or other public schools are receiving. Uh, we just feel like it's time for. That increase, it will bring in for weighty depending on enrollment and who is tuition paying. You know, maybe another five or eight thousand dollars, which is helpful when we're looking at only a two thousand dollar end of year next year, so. That can still competitive.
Correct, yeah. And we have to decide on that as a union?
No. Yeah, we're gonna ask everybody to be the same, but. So we're not doing price wars within ourselves, but um, technically. This is where we are, it's the weirdness of our district, you guys can have your rate, cause you are waiting. Deerfield can have their rate, cause they're Deerfield, but.
Do we have to vote on?
Yes.
And I don't remember the after school rate piece. That's not the after, it's preschool after school, right?
Right. So it's continuing, they continue to pay the debt.
Like an extended day.
We actually don't have that.
Yeah, you don't have it here.
If it works.
Right, okay.
What is our after, what's our after school rate?
Nope. Like for the regular after school program, I have no idea.
Did you say we aren't doing that right now?
We don't have extended day for pre K.
Oh, for pre K. We did before COVID, though, we.
We did.
Yeah. So we're talking, we're hoping to do that again next year?
Not sure, it depends on need, because then we end up with. Depending on how many students are there.
Reason we don't have it now is we didn't have enough sign up to be, to make it cost effective, because pre K requires greater supervision.
Right.
So it's another place we could potentially lose money.
Right, and Wheatley's not the only program that dropped their pre K after school. And actually, I think that started before COVID, I think it was like uh, my first year here before COVID even hit, that we started to make that change. You might have still had a program, but another school, um. We're slowly seeing a shift in the needs. And it's, you know, not cost effective for anyone to. Fund someone to pay, to to work for one or two students.
Did we lose any students because of that?
Not that I know of. But it's possible that. Something changes the mind about.
It sounds like there might be people ready to take their place if we did. Now, don't we usually have people?
Well, we recently turned someone away, but it was for a right now. Entry, um, but we, our preschool program is usually.
Full.
You know what I believe, uh, Kim McCarthy, who oversees now, has ever seen. Through childhood, um, at least she's doing a survey, so that might be something we could ask. Just kind of get another. Information, data point where they say, you know, would you be interested in an after school program if there was one place, if we had one, you know, that kind of stuff? How often would you access, you know, that kind of thing, because. That way we can get a real. How, what do parents want versus, you know, you know, what they're saying. Besides what they're saying at the coffee shop, what are they saying?
Are we voting on this increase today?
You can, or you could table the next, we don't, we, actually, we do need to know who's doing signups right now. So you know, we're.
Does anyone have any other questions about it? Are you guys ready? To make a motion?
Move it, move it.
Okay, a second, all in favor? Yes.
Uh, you know, since we're, we're talking, we just talked about. Uh, preschool here. I was just thinking about after school program, just, just a thought, I mean, I'm not sure. Last time we had an increase for after school. Participation in.
Did an adjustment there.
Couple years.
So I'm not sure where we lay, does it take care of? All the people that work after school, you know, there again, are we? Are we pulling from Peter to pay for Paul, could we not pull him out? Okay.
Yeah, and it's certainly not making.
No.
Much money, um, but it is paying for itself.
Since we brought the other one, I just, you know, I just.
Because the cost and the costs are different, the the personnel is different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to the gift from Yankee Candle. That's, that's an annual gift, right?
They give us with four thousand dollars again.
Did you send, get the check already?
I, yeah, I have it on my table.
Do you want me to take it or?
Is it really big?
No, I don't want to. No, the first one I got, and I still have that one that they gave, presented us.
Oh, it's hanging on your wall.
The kids get a kick out of it. Um, and then. The second year, is that COVID? No, not yet. Um, not like last year, he came here. We took and had a photo up in front of the Wheatley seal in the cafeteria, but I had my mask, he had his mask. And this year we were at a four town safety meeting. Well, we just handed it to him, oh, I guess we're, we're stepping down, it was like a big event. The first year, we were at Yankee Candle, and we had a breakfast and. And all that, and now it's like, here's your check. So we're, we're very grateful for that.
And I think in the past, did you use it for robotics or something like that before?
That was what I was going to use it for, we were piloting some different robotics programs, and then COVID hit, and I did not, I. I wanted to hang on to that as. Emergency funds for anything, you know, at that time, no one knew what was gonna happen, so.
And we did level funding that year after.
Are you doing? Are you gonna, if we get back in the robotics and stuff, are you gonna use it for?
Yeah, well, we have been looking at, we have uh, some pretty good robotics equipment for the. Older grades, and we wanted some, something in the line of coding for the. For the younger kids.
Yeah, some of the kids came to our meeting and. Demonstrated.
Oh, that's right, that's, oh, God, that feels like a million years ago.
It is, it seemed like that, yeah. Do we have to vote on accepting the gift?
Yes.
So moved?
Second, all in favor?
Yeah, I, I don't have much, um. Now, we, we, our community lost Marty Barrett, and I just want to. Give my condolences to her family. From all of us, and. Think she. I think she was here after my son's, went during his second year preschool. But I wasn't so involved, um. But. And what I remember, she did a good job. And then also the collaborative lost their H R director, Cheryl Rogers, and she died of cancer, I. Didn't know she was doing, uh, not doing well with that. But give our condolences to her family too. And. Happy New Year to everybody, that's all I have. So.
Superintendent's report, you know, just to echo on the, the condolences to Marty Barrett, and. She obviously, I mean, obviously, but she hired me, um, and mentored me through, you know, she was eleven years at frontier, three years at Sundown Elementary, so. And then three years as superintendent, she was here seventeen years in this district, and before that she was a principal in Greenfield. Um, but just, uh, you know. Gathering, you know, her ways today, females tomorrow. Again, thank you for those. For thinking of her there, um, my, my report is, um. It's straightforward, sorry, sidetracked my thoughts there, um, we have the CMSI equity odds underway, um. I sent out a note to the community today talking about the surveys coming. The amount of, the collection of data and such is just, and that's, I can do my writing, I sent it to you, I'll be late. But, you know, we are collecting like right now over sixty data points. It's just a lot of work, it's really, most of it's coming out of central office for them to get in advance. They are coming March twelfth. Um, to the twenty second, and they'll be doing site visits, interviews and such, and so. Um, I don't know, they will definitely be interviewing school community members. Um, because in our school community members, I don't know how they're gonna, we have to, we still have to set up what their business is gonna look like because of the uniqueness of. You know, um. They visit multiple buildings before they're multiple committed communities, um, so we'll have something where, that is something you want to, you want to be interviewed, um. Just keep that in mind, I'll probably be sending something out that'll be some level of volunteerism there, uh, but they are gonna want. Leadership to be interviewed. Uh, our superintendency agreement, we had a meeting in November sixteenth, kind of got. Got tied up amongst ourselves, we gotta do a restart, um. It's difficult, we start talking about. I thought it was gonna be really smooth sailing, and then we got into really debates about. What should the agreement say and such, so we kind of need another meeting to get going. Um, I thought we'd be presenting to you this month. Some kind of draft, and we didn't get there, um.
Do we have other districts?
I have model, model ones for the ones, the problem is that the other models are just, they're better than what we have, because we don't have anything, uh, but they're not great either.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, um, they're. You know, this kind of. They were developed very much the same way we were, you know, where you. The four towns got together, said, hey, we'll share the superintendent, and then they never really put in the paperwork behind it, and then. The, the job of superintendent, of the superintendent, superintendent evolved over time, and all of a sudden, you're here now. I just mentioned, for those who, if any seniors are watching at home, we are, I am doing a uh, South County Senior Center Coffee and Conversation with Frontier Regional. Um, but invited them to um, frontier on January thirty first in the morning to. Is the school during school day, and go around and see things and talk about education today and what. What's happening behind the walls, how education's different and the same, um, when they're in school, and just kind of trying to create some lines there. Of communication with them, the idea is to develop even more as time goes on, but starting with coffee and conversations and see what that takes off. Um, it's also a good. Big building winter event for people who are trapped inside their homes, really get around and that kind of stuff. Um, and then the last thing.
What time is that at?
It's at nine in the morning.
You gotta be a senior citizen.
I'm sure I'm close enough.
And the. We're presenting tonight the Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award with Cindy Scanlon. Um, who's a resident of Deerfield Senior Class. We'll be doing that tonight, but just mentioning that, we had, she went, we have a awards banquet in December for her. Just great, great student, great kid.
What do you present it as, is it a special? Thing just for that?
They have a, they have a, Franklin County Superintendents all get together, they meet at Franklin Tech's restaurant, and they do a dinner and give awards. Just for the Superintendent's Award, so. It's an academic excellence award, so it's primarily academics, but also what do they give in leadership and community. That's all I got.
Oh, I, I do have the um, first meeting for the capital improvement planning committee is. Next week.
Okay. Let me know if you need me to go to any of them, alright? We can delay the land if you want me to come in to just kind of.
You sent that, right, a while ago, did the, our, did you send that to them, or?
I sent it before break.
Right, I have to look at that, I probably will want to talk to you.
It's straightforward, yeah, bathroom floors and getting into doing it annually, so around us for ten thousand dollars ish for the next three years for that project.
Yeah.
And then the A C is the bigger one, if they want to break that up into components, because it can be. But it also, there's rebates. But it also, there's rebates, and they gotta keep an eye on the rebates, you know, the home is gonna go there.
And, um, you said the insulation is being paid out of something else?
So the town is taking that on, so that's why we don't even know like where they are in the projects, and it's, you know, it's a conversation I probably have to have with them about where we are with it. Um, all these other projects, we, we control, so when the flooring people, we're, we're doing the, you know, we're getting the estimates, bringing them in, setting the dates, this kind of thing. The town kind of ticked off, when we went to them for the A C, they said, no, we really wanna work on the envelope first. They took that, made a paperwork with their funding for it, so that's why it's kind of like, why does he not know what's going on, that's kind of. Really, and I'm not involved in those meetings and.
If I see Brian today, I gotta go over there, if I see Brian, I can, I can just ask him if there's an update on it, I could text you or, or whatever.
Okay, um, that's it.
Make a motion adjourned.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned at nine thirty-four.